Hi, we will start the live stream as soon as we have a form.
Good to make the connection between.
Yes.
And Erin and Stephanie.
We are good to go.
Okay, the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting from May twenty third, two thousand twenty four. Is called to order at one oh three P M. As a reminder, throughout the meeting, please announce your name before commenting. This is for accessibility and identifies, keeps talking for people who are not using screen. We'll begin with a roll call of COBAC members and we encourage each member to provide a self description. I'll kick us off. This is COBAC Chair Carl Burnett. I use he/him pronouns. I'm here in person in council chambers today. Uh, wearing a black and gray sweater and glasses and beard and short blonde hair and I will. Pass it over to you, Amanda.
Hello, this is Andy Hammer. I'm both in council chambers, sitting next to Carl and have reading glasses that I've. Moved from my face to my head frequently um and short dark brown hair. I go by she/her pronouns. I'm wearing a gray sweater over a summer dress.
Hi, this is John Hayland. I am in city council chambers to the left of Carl if you're looking on your screen. I am a large white male who's balding and I'm wearing a short sleeve collared blue shirt. Hello, Jared Koffbauer. I use he/him pronouns. I'm also balding.
Yes.
I'm getting there, uh, wearing a some of the polka dotted blue shirts and happy to be here.
My name's Barb Campbell. I prefer she and her pronouns. I am getting too old to claim middle aged. And though I have a lot of hair, most of it is turning gray or white. Thank you.
Anybody else in in the room uh wanna? Identify themselves before we move to our online people? No? Okay, um, Erin, you wanna go next?
Sure, um, this is Erin Rivers. I use he/him pronouns. I'm wearing a green T-shirt today with uh black and or brown and gray hair and. I'm sitting in my living room right now.
Thanks. Other online committee members?
Um, this is Stephanie Etsman. Um, I use she/her pronouns. I am online via Zoom and. I have long brown curly hair. And um, I am wearing, you probably can't really see it, but I'm wearing a gray sweater and um. Trying to think. Oh, and I wear glasses. Thank you.
Stephanie, are either of the Lizz's online?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, this is Liz Deacon Martin. I am uh. Coming to a remotely from Seattle in a cafe with a bright window behind me. I've got. Medium. Hair in all respects, length, color. And I use she/her pronouns and it's gonna stain the ear because it can be kind of noisy.
Thanks for joining us from out of town today, Liz. Anybody else online? Okay, so we have um. Looks like Liz Woodfin is absent and we have um. Pre notified absences from Corey Sparks, Nicholas Radin and Whitney Bennett. Um, I'll take this moment to announce that I will be absent from next month's um. COBAC meeting, so um, I hope you guys have a a good meeting without me. I'm gonna be gonna be traveling. Um. Let's move on to the land acknowledgement. Um, I'll just take that one myself. Um. We'd like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River is the original homeland of the Confederated Tribes of the Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of eighteen fifty five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing and gathering rights. The Wana Lama Warm Springs, Wasco, Wasco and Northern Paiute People inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region, the Great Solilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It's our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land. Alright, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes from our April twenty fifth. Meeting. Are there any corrections to the April twenty fifth uh minutes that Lisa sent out? Uh, okay, here no corrections. Is there a motion to approve the April minutes?
Oh, this is John. I motioned to approve the April minutes.
This is Amanda. I'll second that motion.
Okay, um, let's vote on approval of the April minutes uh from the rest of the committee, please. Uh, by show of hands or voice vote or raise your hand online. I see four hands in person uh and one, at least one online. So the minutes from April are approved. Thank you. Um, next we have a public comment period. Um, we have two minutes uh available. Per um, member of the public who'd like to speak to the committee. Um, I see. A couple of people online, I believe. Do any of you wanna make a public comment?
Andy Monroe, can you unmute yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm really sick. I'm just gonna listen.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, Cameron, I see your hand is raised there. Do you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, hi, thanks. My name's Cameron Coronado. I use he/him pronouns. I'm zooming in from Eugene, Oregon today. I'm a graduate student at the University of Oregon studying community regional planning and landscape architecture. I'm currently in a a class that's called Engaging Diverse Communities and we're looking. Uh, creating new innovative democratic innovation solutions to engage with underserved communities. So I'm here today to learn um from this committee and um to have some lessons learned and potentially ask some questions at the end if there's kind of time for that. On strategies that can be used to engage with um communities with disabilities. So thanks for having me.
Yeah, thanks for being here, Cameron. Um, I think we may, we may have some time for that. Um, for the end during our our roundtable or. Um. Um, yeah, I think there'll be some time.
This is Cassandra. Um, Carl, I have a a meeting scheduled with Cameron this afternoon. So Cameron, if you do have questions, I'm happy to um. Notate them, share them with the body and then get back to you then during our call.
Wonderful, thank you.
Selena Barker?
Hi, I'm just here to listen in today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you guys for joining.
Yeah, always nice to have guests. Um. Well, let's see, that brings us to our update from Leadership Bend. Do we have someone from Leadership Bend online or? Yeah, we don't have them in person.
I do not see anyone online at this moment.
Okay, we'll skip that one for now and if TJ or Ben um put in an appearance, we can, we can loop back to them. Um, so I guess that brings us right on to uh an update from Melissa Camonia, our Affordable Housing Coordinator. Thanks for being here, Melissa. Um. She's gonna talk to us about an analysis of impediments to fair housing and you have um twenty minutes.
Thank you. As I'm getting this up to share, um, thank you so much for having me.
Sure, make sure you talk uh close to the mic there. Yeah, thanks. Can everyone online hear Melissa?
No, yes. Can anybody hear me?
I can hear, I can hear.
Somebody's hand is up. Surprise, Stephanie. Don't go on soon. And you?
Um, different, different types of.
It's a secondary mic.
Okay, I believe. Let's give that a try and if you're having trouble hearing uh Melissa online, please um raise your hand so we can get that fixed.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much for having me today. Melissa Camonia, Affordable Housing Coordinator. I am. Thrilled to be here. I have. Medium length brown hair, wearing glasses, and I pulled out my fall clothing because it is cold out. And um, I always think when it's time to describe myself um visually. The way that I see myself is how my daughter's friend said she sees me. And she told my daughter that she sees me like a rebellious librarian. So I'm just gonna leave that with you. But I'm here today to talk to you. I'm here today to talk to you about some really important work that the Housing Department has done. It's the twenty twenty four Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing. And this is a com- just accumulation of ten months of work and three months of writing. Longer than that, actually. And really, it all started back with you all when I came to you first and talked to you last year about the Fair Housing. Um, proclamation. So thank you for your partnership and you are woven throughout this document, I assure you. Before I start, though, I do also want to recognize that um the Equity Department, in particular Andres, helped with um. Framing the document and um. Other departments supported us as well, and these are difficult things to talk about. It's difficult for the community to feel. Safe talking about some of these issues and some are difficult to hear. So I just want to acknowledge that before we start. Just a little background and history. Um, why do we do this work? Well, the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty eight established a Fair Housing Act. And what is called affirmatively furthering fair housing. Basically, what it all comes down to is we receive um. Funding from the federal government through the Community Development Block Grant Fund. As a requirement, we are, we do this work to assess fair housing issues in the community and make recommendations to address them. It's a discriminatory practices assessment, so we document what we did, we identify impediments and we make recommendations. This was done in twenty twelve and again in twenty nineteen, and here we are again in twenty twenty four. Little background about Oregon and Bend. Some of this may be news to you, but Oregon's constitution banned African Americans from living in Oregon until nineteen twenty six. An amendment to the constitution changed that, but practices still happened. While it wasn't law anymore, practices still happen. And laws prohibited African Americans, Chinese and Japanese from owning real estate and. Interestingly, through this process, Ricardo Waits with the Central Oregon Black Leaders Assembly. Identified that there are racially restrictive covenants within the city of Bend. Um, and it is for a particular neighborhood called Wysteria. It was a large area and it was established that if, and the trustees said if you were Japanese or Chinese, you could not own that land. Up until the year two thousand and one. Now, it wasn't enforceable, of course, after fair housing laws came into place. Especially after nineteen sixty eight, but it's important for us to understand that those roots were here because the rep, the. The ripples and the impacts of that continue today. Um, other facts about Bend, Ben's mayor in nineteen twenty two and twenty three was a registered member of the Ku Klux Klan. And as recently as nineteen forty three, there were um. Requirements for segregation from Ben City Council. As recently, though, as twenty ten, there is a city code on equal rights which prohibits discrimination and employment. Places of public accommodation and housing. So as I mentioned, this document is required by HUD and there's a lot of desktop work, but the majority of the work is community input and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about that. In six months of engagement, we really listened to the community. And we were in lots of spaces that were intimate spaces and then public spaces. And we heard so much. So much hard things, even some positive things. It wasn't all difficult. But there were eight public events, two open houses, thirteen agencies were consulted. We put out a digital fair housing survey. So we estimate we reached about three hundred and fifty members through the survey and three hundred interviews, face to face. We heard three common issues. We heard um. It's difficult for property management to handle tenant housing needs. That first picture there was submitted by a member of the public of um. An issue that she was having difficulty having addressed. The second issue we heard is that there is limited housing and infrastructure for persons with disabilities. And lastly, substandard living conditions. Which are things like um. That even ties in with accessibility where perhaps someone can't access their shower or their bathroom or the electricity doesn't work in half of their house. So in addition to that, I spent a lot of time with my nose down looking at data. And we are required to look at census tract data to identify if there are pockets of concentrations of problems. Within the city of Bend. And so we looked at census data and we looked at race and ethnicity, persons with disabilities, income, poverty, employment and housing. We also looked at local data because US Census data is limited for a few reasons. It tends to be older and it's a little bit zoomed out and it is voluntary. So there are times that folks don't. Participate for various reasons. So we looked at local data. We looked at public data, looked at the private sector, school enrollment and um things like income, violent crime and. The presence of two income earners in a household. Okay, all that to say, after looking at all of that, consulting with different departments in within the city. We identified some impediments to fair housing. And I'm going to go through these a little bit quickly and I'll give time for questions because some of these are heavier than others. But the first one, as I mentioned. We looked at census tract data to find where there are concentrations of um. Issues, if you will. And we identified in census tract fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, they had. Two or three issues identified. And the challenge with that is not all concentrations are bad. But sometimes when you have more than one concentration, that can limit what's called social mobility and it's that idea. That you want your children to do better than you did, or you want your kids to have access to more things than you have. But if you have these. Barriers, multiple barriers, it that makes it difficult. So the first recommendation that we have to address it is to prioritize services and community investment where those concentrations are identified. So if we know there's barriers, let's prioritize our services and our work there. Second recommendation is to evaluate our internal projects for impacts on those classes and for potential displacement. Do no harm in otherwise, other words. Um, we also want to balance tracks by increasing housing supply in areas outside those concentrations because. We know there's not enough housing units and if you don't have a place to go, you'll stay where you are in a space that's not great. And we also want to create support systems for low income families moving into high social mobility areas. What that really means is it's not enough. To create a wonderful housing opportunity in a high income, high opportunity area. There has to be social supports because studies have shown that just providing housing isn't enough for um. A family that has low income or multiple barriers to be successful. So we're gonna be looking at networks of support. Second impediment we identified is that uh Bend specific fair housing data is limited and inaccessible. So as I mentioned, census data is old, it's voluntary and it's difficult to make timely conclusions. Some of the data is five years old and if you can just take a second, think about all the things that happened in the last five years. So if we're making decisions for the future based on things that happened in the past, we need something in the middle. We need an opportunity. So we are looking at. Creating workflows and systems to collect and analyze data, platforms to communicate our local data with the public and then. I like to think of of the cities, you're gonna hear me use this example a lot because I love it. If this is the city's table of influence, there's a lot of things that aren't on our table of things that we don't have control over or access to. Community partnerships, nonprofits, other public groups outside the city have data that we would love to have access to. So, but they're off our table. So we're gonna look at how do we enhance those partnerships to make sure that we can share data in a way that's meaningful. The third impediment is that there's limited housing and infrastructure that creates barriers for persons with disabilities. This goes all the way back to the first time that I came to talk to you all. Um, and I took your feedback, as I mentioned, and it's woven throughout the document. Um, we overwhelmingly heard not just from COBAC but from members in the community, from different interviews and different surveys. That there are not enough opportunities. There's not enough housing units available for persons with disabilities. So. Our number one recommendation is to increase the number of fully accessible dwelling units in Bend. We've already um in our housing committee, we've implemented bonus criteria for applicants. To be competitive, we've given them bonus points if they build more than the minimum units of accessible units. And since we've implemented that as bonus points. Every application that's been approved has more than the minimum number of accessible units, just from bonus points.
Awesome.
So uh, the needle's moving even a little bit. So we're still gonna be looking at ways that we can further incentivize that. We also heard, though, from developers that by asking them to build fully accessible units, there's a cost. And it costs between twenty five and seventy thousand dollars more for developers to build that unit. Because of extra square footage, because of different fixtures, but also. Our developers are trying to build densely and maybe they have to lose a unit to build an accessible unit in a multi-unit project. So we're looking at ways where we can create extra funding or um offset that additional cost so that it continues to be something that can pencil. Lastly, we heard overwhelmingly that there are areas of town that are not accessible. Um, and if you can't access an area of town, you can't live there. So we did hear that and we are looking internally to identify where those areas are. Um, that limit walkability or rollability and. At we start to identify them and then talk about what we can do about it. And it really ties Carl into our event last week of just. Looking and starting to identify that. This is the largest one, has the most action items, but I'm gonna go through this just quickly for the sake of time. But we did identify. That uh fair housing enforcement and education is needed. In the work that that we did in the community, we heard from property management companies that they're pretty overwhelmed right now. They don't have enough staff. To address um client needs. But there's also a bit of a disconnect in some of the communities. We heard. Persons trying to request reasonable accommodations being denied. Because they don't know how to request those legally. And when they're not being requested according to all the boxes checked, they're being denied and property management companies aren't providing assistance. So one of the things that we're gonna look at is how do we bring all that together? How do we give education on both sides and have resources from groups in the community to help with that? Um, you can read all these recommendations, but they are all essentially to. Strengthen our community with fair housing awareness and education. Lastly, and the last impediment that we identified is that there are racial disparities in lending and funding practices and policies. Remember I told you that there were those racially restrictive covenants even in the city of Bend? Um. The long term impacts of that is that, well, as an example. Many of us bought our first home with a down payment from our parents because they had a home and they were able to take money out of their home to give it to us to buy our homes. Not everybody, of course, but. The idea is if you weren't even allowed to own property, then you are missing that inherited wealth. And so when we looked at publicly released and published mortgage data. We did identify that um. In central Oregon, if there are different disparities where different groups have. Higher rejection rates for mortgages, they are being given higher interest rates and lower loan takeouts. And so we have identified that and these impediments will help us to look at the data in more detail. Help us to identify um partners that we have to help address those issues and educate the community. On that note, we don't know, I know you, you're gonna ask, who are those lenders? We haven't had a chance to get in the data that deep. But recently HUD had published a press release that they have identified one of the lenders that is uh guilty of that and they are addressing it. That was a lot for one year of work to summarize it in ten-ish minutes. Um, what, when we finished all of the work, we took it to city council and we, we gave them these options. Um, asked them, what would you like us to do? Do you want us to come back and report regularly? Do you want to incorporate these into council goals or other? And we were um, and we were asked to come back on a regular basis and provide updates. So I'm going to pause for questions and I'm going to ask COBAC the same question. Now that you've heard all the things. What would you like to do with the information? Do you want us to come back? Do you wanna be a part of solving some of the problems? Well, I'm just gonna stop and let you ask questions.
Can you go back to back one slide to the options? Great.
I mean, yes, I would like to be a part of solving problems. Um, I think it's so exciting to hear that. Um, developers are putting in more than the minimum with the bonus point system. That is. Absolutely amazing. Um, I have a side question. Where is the Wysteria neighborhood right now?
So it was a huge parcel of land that has since been subdivided and renamed into lots of different neighborhoods. But in general, it is located um near Pilot Buick over there.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, this is Carl. I. We would love to have you back. Um, anytime you wanna come give us updates, we'd, we'd love to have them. Um, especially, I think, as they relate to accessibility, of course. Um. And. I do think it would be interesting if we were to um incorporate some housing related goals into our um. Strategic plan in the future for for COBAC, um although that's something I think we. Um, we'd have to take on maybe with with you as a a consultant or a resource for that. I I had a question um. About just a term that you were using, fully accessible units, and how's that been defined?
That's a great question. There are two standards that we have recommended that our affordable housing developers use. And um, I don't have the language at the tip of my tongue, but they are. Published standards that we received from the state of Oregon. One is a, what I can do is I can get that to Cassandra and she, and then she can send you those links because I apologize, I don't have their names at the tip of my tongue. But what we, we have found in the conversations and with developers is that the term accessible. There's a whole rainbow of what that means and it could mean um being. Adjustable, readily adaptable to fully ready for someone to move in. And so we. We're trying to help provide them industry standards to help make that decision.
Yeah, and and accessible for whom too, right? And.
Exactly.
We. You've talked about. Units that are accessible for a person with um. Who's hearing impaired or um as a a bit, you know, visually impaired or. Um, maybe for seniors or for wheelchair users, they would all have different needs. So I, I appreciate that is probably pretty difficult to. Quantify that.
Yes, it is, but it it's definitely something that we have been discussing with our partners and pointing them back to. Industry standards gives us at least an objective reference that they can work from. and pointing them back to industry standards gives us at least an objective reference that they can work from.
Right, looks like we have a couple of questions online. Liz, Dieter Murn?
Yeah, thank you. And I wanna echo Carl's question and interest in, you know, well, what kind of, what does accessible mean? Because, yeah, like you said, seven kinds of accessibility. Could you remind us what are the requirements for developers? Like, how many units should need to be accessible for inaccessible?
Yes. Yes, because this is something that I had to learn as well. In multifamily units, that's apartment living, or if you have what is many mini units and like a mini development, it's ten percent of the units are required by law to be accessible. So for those developers that did eleven percent accessible or more of their units, they got a bonus point from our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Interestingly, for homeownership, the minimum number of required units is zero. So for any new developments that were proposed coming online that even had one, they got bonus points because that feels like a victory to me, at least to have even one in a new development to be fully accessible.
So.
And then, and then you're just talking about larger developments, multi, multi-unit. Is there, if you built a duplex or a triplex or something, there's no bonus points for that, right?
Well, and let me be clear that this is not market rate housing that we're talking about. These are folks that apply to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for federal funds for subsidy for their developments, and it's a competitive process. So if a market rate developer builds market rate housing, there's no bonus points for them. There's nothing that that I'm talking about for that. This is all just for folks that apply for federal funding or city funding, if you, in addition. And fully accessible for who? Carl, that's a good question that I can't answer. Based on their standards, I'd have to go and talk to them and see what standards they're using and what what their plan is. There are two developers that have bonus points for that. I can find out. They're very early in their development and their planning. But I can get that information and I'd be happy to report that back.
That would be great. This is Carl again. I, in my mind, there's sort of two tiers of accessible design when you're talking about apartments and when you're talking about mobility issues. And one tier is there's step-free access to the unit. The doors are sufficient with for a wheelchair, these kinds of things. Then the second tier is like having an adapted kitchen, for example. That doesn't always come with the territory of building a unit that is nominally accessible. So I would be curious to know, like, specifically about accessible kitchen, whether those are being built or not.
I will connect with the developers and in a time that I'm invited back, I'll see if they'd like to join me and talk about their project. If you're open to that.
Wanted to come in and, and talk about it.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, we love that.
Okay, Cassandra, I'll let you know when I find out.
Thanks. Another question online from Erin.
Liz basically asked my question, so I'm good. I have a question. Is there a way, like, I think about like what we can do as a committee to help this process? Is there a way that, you know, for instance, if that, if they would be okay with it, that we could highlight developers that have gone above and beyond the ask? And that have gotten the bonus points? So we can say, you know, hey, look at X LLC, like, they have done, they have done this, and we really appreciate their contribution to the community. And also, my other question is, is there a way we can write letters of support in order to secure federal funding for that twenty-five thousand to ninety thousand gap that you have for each unit add-on cost?
Those are great questions, John. Regarding acknowledging those developers that have fudged and received those bonus points. Yes, I love positive accolades rather than you know, calling people out. So I love, I love the positive aspect of that. I wonder if it would make sense for us to think about, do we recognize that? Like, what point of the development process do we recognize them? It might be something where they invite COBAC to come to their groundbreaking or to their their welcome home parties or something like that. So that's definitely something that we can discuss with the developers because I don't know at what point you would want to recognize them. Because at this point, it's, it's early, it's really early in their process. And then the second part about writing letters of support for them to receive federal funding, I don't know. That's a good, I'll have to think about that. I don't know. I don't know.
Any way we can contribute.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna table that and get back to you because I'm not sure about that one.
Okay.
It's good, good suggestion.
Did I, could I, so do I understand you correctly, Melissa? Multifamily unless they are receiving affordable housing subsidies, there's no requirement?
I think it's a requirement, and I may have to seek correction.
Okay.
Andres, do you know, it's all multifamily housing, ten percent is required. Yes.
Even if it's market rate.
Yes, but our, but our bonus points are only for the.
Understood, yeah, got it.
And then same thing for homeownership. There are no requirements currently.
And, and conceptually duplexes and triplexes are really being considered the same as a single-family home. Those just aren't counted as multifamily, right?
That is a, yes, currently with the way that I understand it, development of duplexes for homeownership, if you will, is considered single-family. Yeah.
So that, yeah, there's no requirement if you.
There's no requirement.
That one, right? Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments for Melissa before we move on?
I have one. Melissa, this is Derek. So I applaud you for doing the outreach and the engagement with the community, and I was curious in those discussions, were there any more kind of nuanced observations or highlights of like what types of transportation barriers people were facing, like, you know, needing a bus stop closer to their home or needing a vehicle to drive or not being able to, you know, find accessible parking or things like that?
Yes, there's one complex in particular just slightly outside of Bend that has a large population of residents that came to talk to me that have accessibility challenges. And at the time, and this was October of last year, so there may be a new bus stop over there just off of ninety-seven, just on the south side of town. They had great concern that the nearest bus stop was a half a mile. And I did provide them with resources for dial or ride and contact information to see if that conversation could be elevated, but it was mostly that complex that I heard that. Regarding accessibility, it was really, quite honestly heartbreaking to hear folks not having anywhere to go, no units being available, so they accept something that isn't right. And there, one woman expressed great, great frustration that she's been in a unit for three months, she can't get into the bathroom. That's just hard to hear, really hard to hear. So most of what I heard was not about transportation, but about the units themselves. But Derek, we can talk afterwards about the details of that site.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, Melissa, thank you for that report. That was great.
Thank you so much for your generosity and having me here so often and your input and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the COBAC Strategic Plan subgroup updates. We'll start with the Improving Transportation and Infrastructure group. Our big thing for the last month was planning and holding this walk and roll event that was held last week. And, oh, thanks, I haven't seen those pictures.
I've reported that exact sidewalk.
I have two now, so maybe, maybe it'll put some pressure on that particular business owner.
And if, you know, I'm sorry to say, Amanda, if I know which spot that is, it doesn't just end. That gravel that's in the foreground actually used to be sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Corrosed by salt or something.
Exactly. You know, they just built that so wrong, you know, something went very wrong when they were just pouring that concrete. Yeah, but either way, yeah, no, this one is kind of more interesting even than no sidewalk whatsoever. There was, and it's just deteriorated to nothing.
Yeah, so the purpose of this event was not to draw attention.
Let's talk about that, some more about that one.
That was a nice kind of fringe benefit maybe, but yeah, this was a group of COBAC members as well as members of other members of the city government. We had Councilor Campbell here. We had Councilor Mendez joined us as well. And we also had Ian, maybe someone can remind me his last name from Ben Parks and Recreation. Thank you. And the idea was we made a short walk about zero point seven miles through a section of of west, River West neighborhood of Bend. We went through some parks and recreation properties on multi-use paths as well as through some city sidewalks and some, some neighborhood stretches where we had streets with, with no sidewalk. And along the way, we, we heard from Ian about some parks and recreation initiatives that are underway that would support access. We also just got to talk amongst ourselves a lot about the state of our sidewalk infrastructure, and we also got to talk about Bend Works and the other avenues that exist for reporting barriers that exist in the sort of pedestrian infrastructure network here in town. So it was a small event, but I think it was successful. I've heard some positive feedback about it. Personally, I would like to do similar events in the future, but one thing that I would like to change or improve is that I would like to do better outreach to the disability community here and get more citizens with different kinds of disabilities present for the event and so that we can get some more, more perspectives on things because I think there's, there's more we can learn from our community. And I guess I'll open it up at this point to anyone who is involved, who wants to say anything, or anyone who wasn't involved to ask questions.
This is Amanda. I apologize. I was leaving for the weekend and wasn't able to make it, but I was completely intended to do that. This is my neighborhood and I do recognize, you know, a lot of these, these photos and how there's impediments. And I also will in the future do better outreach with, within my community and organizations. So thank you for saying that. I think we do need to do more of these, and we do need to include people who have varying disabilities, including intellectual and developmental. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
This is Derek. I do wanna recognize Whitney Bennett's role, and she's not here today, but she did a lot of work to plan this event and coordinated months and months of planning work. So I just wanted to throw that out. And for the counselors who came and showed up, and I think it was really well planned and organized and had a lot of desired outcomes that we were intending. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that on Whitney's help in getting that accomplished as well as Cassandra's help. Thank you, Cassandra, for supporting us and making that happen. So our other big goal is around accessible on-demand transportation. We haven't been working on that one for a while since we've been working on the walk and roll event. So I think it's time for us to pick up that flag again for for a while. So we'll, we'll try to get together within the next month and plan our next steps on that, I think. And with that, let's move to the Creating Unaccessible Community group. Any updates from you guys?
Yeah, this is John. We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. I do know that we are looking to reschedule the barbecue hot dog boiling event to possibly a park that has more parking for people who require ADA parking. Or any parking, yes. It's kind of hard when you're in a historic neighborhood to have lots of parking. I know Alpenglow is very accommodating, so I know Cassandra's looking at different alternatives, but it will happen this year. My main thing is it just needs to happen, doesn't matter where, when, but I mean, of course, the where, the where does matter when it comes to accessibility. So we will factor that into account, but that's the only update that we have for that. So it's put off for next month. And, but it will be this summer or fall.
Okay, Cassandra, anything to add to that?
This is Cassandra. I don't think so. I think John summarized it perfectly in that we'll just look for an event potentially with some synergy or cohesion with other events that are happening, just so that we get as much visibility as possible on COBAC and the amazing work that this committee does.
Okay, well, I'm disappointed we're not gonna have a barbecue on my birthday, but I think. Okay. Anything from our third subgroup? Let's be creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend group.
This is Amanda. I don't have anything. Stephanie, do you have anything to add? I am not recalling where we were at.
Hello, this is Stephanie. Sorry, I was having trouble. My computer has some lag time, so I kept hitting the stop video and then I kept appearing and disappearing. Anyway, I do not have anything to update on. I know I've missed the last couple of meetings and I apologize for that. I did see that we, Cassandra, we have been having some challenge in meeting with the trauma-informed Oregon folks and trying to get some information on training opportunities for City of Bend personnel, cost, number of trainings, length of trainings and all of that kind of stuff. And Cassandra had floated by an idea of maybe switching the trainings. And I have not followed up on that at all with Cassandra. So that's probably our next step is to figure out what other opportunities might exist. So that's all I have to add.
This is Carl. It's so surprising that they aren't more eager to have people signing up for those trainings. I'm a little surprised.
Yeah, I think that they are putting a lot of well, they have, I'm not quite sure where the breakdown is within their organization and trying to get somebody online or, you know, get them to grant us an audience to ask our questions. They do have a, they published on their website a list of kind of a train the trainer type people. So throughout the state of Oregon, those individuals who are who they've trained in trauma-informed care and trauma-informed practices. And so there were a handful of people who live in central Oregon who are trained and can facilitate a trauma-informed training. However, they are all doing them one-on-one virtually. So that's not really gonna suit the city. So that's not really going to suit the City of Bend. I mean, we need. A large number of people trained at a time and we can't, you know, otherwise we could just direct the City of Bend employees to do the self-study. Um, and you know, train at their own pace, um, which is completely available for free through their website. So it's getting the larger group trainings and from what I understand. They're just swamped currently. They do do them. Um, they do do them for very large organizations. But they require a lot of resource commitment on their end, and I think it comes down to. Just. The resources, lack of resources to to take on another large citywide project like what we were proposing. So.
Amanda, I wonder if we could work like. Work with Cassandra in internally through the City of Bend to see if we can um. Just. Have that training included and like. I don't know, say. City of Bend employees. Need to get this training done within the year or something and give them a link to the training and then that's what they. And then every, then the new employees who are onboarding are required to do that training as well. Can we work with you on that, Cassandra?
Absolutely, Amanda. This is Cassandra. I think um, as uh, just opened the opportunity for the. Uh, the three of you to be able to schedule some time with me and we can kind of creatively problem solve. And I don't think that it's unusual for. Um, smaller organizations and nonprofits who are tasked with, you know, large, uh, large trainings like this to have some delay. But I think we do have opportunities, whether it's right-to-be, who are more um, positioned to be able to offer really kind of mass scale trainings. Um, in a, in a very uh. Large swath of niche categories, which would be suitable for what we're looking for. So um, I would love to meet with all of you and I look forward to that.
So this is Stephanie again. Cassandra, do you want me to reach out then just to to like the the three of us and and you to try to. Facilitate a meeting time? Would would that be kind of the appropriate next step for you?
That'd be wonderful and I encourage all the groups to always keep in touch and I try to keep in touch with you and email just to keep abreast of. Uh, updates and how we can best support you from not only myself, but Lisa and also the rest of the equity team.
Oh, this is John. I just have a quick question. If we can't find that kind of resource for a mass training in central Oregon, would it be worth it to have someone come in? From outside of town to come in for like a couple days to do a training?
Um, this is Stephanie. That's exactly what we were reaching out to trauma-informed Oregon for. Um, is to see if they, we can bring a resource in from um. I think they're based out of Portland. I want to say, I I don't think it's Salem, but um, but but to actually bring a trainer over the pass. You know, into central Oregon to do a large group training or a series of training. Over the course of a a week or two, and that's where the breakdown has been and um, so. It's not unreasonable, I don't think it's unreasonable um, for, you know, obviously to do a a citywide. Training initiative like this, to bring in a trainer from outside the central Oregon area. It's just finding one, an organization that has those kinds of resources that aren't already completely tapped out. Um, with other large training programs that they're currently rolling out. But the right-to-be, I want to learn more about that and maybe that's the 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 appropriate uh, avenue that we pursue for now. And but I don't really want to. I'm hesitant to let go of the trauma-informed. Um, idea completely. I think it is. A really good idea to um, propose this to the City of Bend employees to, it's something that they could do self-study, maybe all. Maybe it's part of the onboarding process for all new hires as a way to kind of get started in getting the City of Bend employees trained. Um, and uh, but but obviously in order for us to, as a committee, to fulfill our. Goal, we probably need to look at a different training program completely. Or, you know, and or and in addition to the trauma-informed, maybe our goal a little too, with trauma-informed, so.
Liz Woodfin here. Um, Stephanie, I completely agree with you and um, I too am reluctant to. Um, give up the trauma-informed Oregon piece. Um, but I like the idea of um, bringing on a different training in tandem.
Okay, great. So this is Stephanie again. So we'll all go ahead and send out that email just so that the committee, you know, um. Um, knows um, what our next step will be and hopefully we'll have more to report at the next meeting. Something more substantial than we don't have anything to report. And I apologize for that.
Right, anything else on that topic? Great, okay, we'll move into the COBAC roundtable section. Uh, this is the part of the meeting where you can just share any meetings that you've attended. Over the last month, um, any information you've learned about accessibility. Um, or firsthand experiences that you had about accessibility that you'd like to share with the group. Start with you, Amanda. Do you have anything you want to share?
Thanks, Carla, Amanda. Um, I'm thinking, I don't think I have anything right now. I'll pipe in if I.
Yeah, let me know. If we should come back to you, John, do you have any?
No, I I don't really have a lot of uh. I have a lot going on, but not in relation to accessibility.
Um, Derek.
Yeah, I would add, so our uh, CET summer services start in June, the recreation services. Um. We're doing a transit to trail service that we piloted last year and we now have a twenty bike trailer. We're actually gonna be. Working with Oregon Adaptive Sports to see how well their trikes um, can fit inside of our buses. Um, they were supposed to come yesterday, but they're in the middle of moving, so they're gonna come next week. Um, and then potentially do an event with them. Um, but all of our buses are ADA accessible, so we have opportunities for folks if they're on a wheelchair and want to get up to Mount Bachelor. They want to do some exploring around the the visitor's center. That is also um, ADA compliant. Has a paved trail coming back into town. There's a great opportunity for um, people who have disabilities to be able to get out in nature. And use our transit service to get them there. I have a, sorry, this is John. I have a quick question. You you guys don't run a bus up to Tumalo Falls area, do you? Nope, we do, yeah. I was just thinking it's got such a wide bike trail and it's all downhill. It'd be a great ride all the way up and then just. You know, coast on your way back.
Yeah, that was part of a uh, feasibility study that we did in twenty eight, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And we chose the Mount Bachelor Summer Service over that because the gravel road is just terrible on our buses. And there were some pretty sensitive watershed issues with somebody needing to go in and pave that area and just all. The additional visitor visits that we would have and that area was gonna kind of stress the environment a little too much. So it ranked low. Lower than Mount Bachelor. We also did a study between Sisters and Hudu for transit service. So basically, the city was looking at feasible uh, na- uh, highway corridors within national forests. For which to run public transit, accessible public transit.
Got it. And did I, did I hear correctly that um, the Primeville fifty kilometer bike trail is back on? Possibly the one that they have voted down?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Sorry, that's.
It's outside my purview, right? I can check it.
Um, I've got, I've got an update, I realized. Uh, this is Carl. So as I mentioned, I'm gonna be um, traveling next month and planning a family trip to um, the UK. And um, I was, I was trying to buy some, some theater tickets um, the other day. Online and I, I couldn't figure out how to buy wheelchair accessible seats, so I called up the venue and they said. Oh, you need an access card and um, so I've, the last few days I've been on this. Um, little journey learning about um. This access card thing, which is a relatively new thing in the UK. Um, that you can apply for if you have a disability and. It costs money, not a lot, which is a little surprising to me. Um, there's a fee for it, but. It's kind of cool, actually. You, you have to document um, the nature of your disability, which. Can present some barriers, but then you get this card that says specifically what kinds of accommodations you need. Um, in order to get around and use, you know, public facilities. Um. For example, they have different symbols for people who have difficulty um, standing or queuing in line. Um, very popular pastime in England, queuing. Uh, people who need level access in in a wheelchair, people who have difficulty walking or moving more than a uh. Short distance, people who need urgent access to uh, accessible toilets. Um, people who use assistance dogs, who who uh, require a companion. Um, who need um, visual information in alternative formats. We need auditory information or alternative formats or other. Um, and so I've applied for my, my card so that I can buy wheelchair accessible seating. It it was weird to me that I had to have that jump through those hoops and have a doctor's letter in order to just. Buy the equivalent of, you know, an ADA um. Seat at at a, at a theater, but um. I'll report back what what the experience was like um, using that card in the UK. Um, one thing I noticed that I thought was cool is that. The people who actually um, review the applications and issue the cards are. Uh, an organization called Nimbus that is made up, I think entirely of people with disabilities who um. Have kind of set the, these standards and guidelines and and review the applications and seem very serious about um, combating fraud. Um, which um, as, as we know is, is a real problem um, with some, some kinds of programs like this. Um, I went to the first um. Amphitheater concert of the, of the season last week, I guess it was, and um, just. Uh, amazed by the number of people using the ADA seating um, section these days. It used to be just, just a few people per show. And now it's dozens. Um, and I'm not saying that they are all fraudulent, but uh, definitely the. The self-selection model of disability seating um. Uh, is, is at least potentially um, subject to abuse, so. That's my thing. Uh, anybody online have any updates to share?
If I could just interject, Carla, it is a fascinating um, piece of information from the UK and I really look forward to hearing. Back from you to see what the experience is and I can't help but thinking that it also creates its own barriers in a way, right? Like that's, I'm really curious. I thank you for sharing that because I think it'll be really fascinating to hear.
I, I also had the impression that if I were a UK resident, the barriers would be much lower. Because it sounds like if I were a UK resident, I would already have some official documentation of my disability. It sounds like that's a very standard thing. And they're like, oh yeah, you just submit that. And it's only if you don't have that, that you have to go get a doctor's letter and submit it. Um, so uh, kind of different standards.
Uh, can I ask what the fee is for the card?
It was fifteen pounds plus five bucks. Yeah, plus an additional five for international mailing.
It's funny, it's like immediately when you say like an ID for that, it makes me think of how people are trying to limit voting by making ID cards like. A requirement, for instance, but then it's also like I could see where that comes in handy because of all the arguments people get into about. Companion animals and emotional support animals and if they're an actual service animal and.
Right, I mean, it it, it's very much. Makes it. It gives you legitimate proof, like, look, I do have a disability, it's documented, but um, but yeah, we, in this country, we. Tend to veer away from solutions like that, it seems like. Anybody online um, who has any, any updates for the group?
Um, this is Aaron. I have a, I guess a brief update or something small. I, um, my family made a donation to um. OAS to help them purchase a new snow cart uh, for next season. So they'll have another one, they'll have one at Bachelor and one at Hudu next year. Um, so I guess it's um, accessibility related, but it won't be ready till next season, but it sounds exciting. Hopefully we'll be uh, next winter.
This is Carl. Aaron, that's, that's amazing. Um, thank you for doing that. For those who don't know. Um, the snow cart is a pretty revolutionary piece of technology that um, has just become available in the last few years. That really allows um, people with a lot of disabilities um, to be skiing independently. Um, where previously they would have had to rely on um, a, a companion or a guide for help. Um, it's, it's pretty cool. If you Google snow cart with a K, um, you can see some videos of, of a person who. Um, has a, um, you know, some fairly significant disabilities who you think maybe um. Uh, just to, to look at him, um, that, that he wouldn't be able to ski independently, but he's um. He's learned to uh, to ski the snow cart independently. Um, and it's, it's pretty impressive to watch. Um. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to number nine on our agenda. The accessibility and equity manager update from Cassandra.
Thank you, Carl. This is Cassandra. I just have a few quick items, um, and essentially. Invitations to COBAC members for upcoming City of Bend booths um, at both Pride and Juneteenth. And you should have all received an email um, with links that allow you to be able to sign up for times, um, for short times. You could come for an hour, a couple hours. Or just come stop by and um, get some swag. Thank you to Andres and Lindsay um, for all of their work and. Um, uh, doing this and also Kathy in scheduling and making uh, the booth happen on behalf of the city and excited to attend again. Um, just to give you a little bit of an idea of the dates uh, coming up. Uh, Ben Pride is going to be on Saturday, June first, from eleven to five at Drake Park. Um, in that email, there's a signup form that you can um, be included in and have a t-shirt size, what hours you like to volunteer. And the different times that the shift is available. And for Juneteenth, that's gonna be on uh, June fifteenth and sixteenth, which is over the weekend, um, from eleven to five thirty in Drake Park. To volunteer similarly, you just follow the link. Um, it'll take you to Lindsay's uh, charting that she has created to be able to have a um. Live uh, ability to see what's going on and then you can join the city, uh, the booth and be part of the festivities and celebrating these two. Really important events in our community. Um, also wanted to extend a um, sincere thanks um, to our subcommittee uh, and to Carl and Whitney and Derek for your work. Uh, in getting the walk-in role hosted um, and uh, out in community. I've heard exceptional feedback from so many different. Folks around the city uh, and externally as well, just saying that it was a really great event and they hope that there are more to follow. Um, and I just wanted to acknowledge the work that it takes to get to this point in the history of COBAC. And you know, I I think that we're making progress as much as, you know, we all month to month come in and see that there are updates that have happened. We kind of sometimes stall out or don't have progress, which is completely natural with, when you're dealing with external forces, but. This was in a, a really exciting moment to see so many different um, parts of city, city councillors, uh, city staff, external um. Supporters, Ben Parks and Rec all come together to be able to see the work that you all are putting forth and identifying. So. Um, many kudos to you all and thank you also to Lisa and Stephanie and Melissa and Andres and Lindsay. Uh, for being part of that as well, because I think we have just a solid, fantastic equity department that comes through to support and we have uh, that support also from the city. So thank you all for that. The other thing I just wanted to bring to attention as we're wrapping up May, but it is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And just wanted to really um, take a moment to honor what that is happening in May, um, and to keep an eye out for other um. Events that are happening and closing out the month as well. And with that, that concludes my update.
Thanks, Cassandra. Are there any uh, AAPI Heritage Month events happening in Bend that you know of?
I think at this point of the calendar, um, we have, we have um, concluded most of them. APEC held. A pretty large event at COCC. Is that where it was held this last weekend? Wanted to speak to it at all.
This is Andres Portela, Equity and Income Director for the City of Bend, prononcee him. Um, so Epic hosted their. Um, event at the Tower Theater this last weekend, um, in which they did a showcase of AAPI. Uh, folks in the community who have just random talents and it was just a wonder, wonderful event. Um, additionally, they, they did facilitate some stuff at COCC this, during this week, a conversation around. Additionally, they, they did facilitate some stuff at COCC this, during this week, a conversation around Asian hate and they showed a movie. I do know OSU and COCC are, are planning to do a little bit of programming over the next week, but Epic will be at ATRAC next week, discussing the work that they've been doing to build community here. So as far as events to come, you can come to ATRAC and, and see what they have going.
All right. That moves us into the agenda-setting portion of our agenda. Are there things we want to make sure that we get to or talk about for our June meeting? Cassandra, do you have anything on your radar that you want to make sure we get in next month?
We will be having David Abis from the City of Bend joining us to talk about the Accessibility Fund. What kind of projects have been completed as we're coming to the end of our fiscal year, what has been completed in the past year and what we've got on deck coming up and earmarked for some of those accessibility funds. So he'll be joining us in the June meeting.
Okay. Great. Lisa, anything else we should know about? From your perspective, okay. All right. Well, if, if anything, if anything else pops into anyone's head, please, please speak up and, and mention that so we can get it on the agenda for next month. Let's move to our COBAC Council liaison update from Councilor Barb Campbell.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. I was able to participate in the Walk and Roll event and just really thought it was great. I got a lot out of it myself. It was a little bit of a small group. It was also the perfect size group for really having conversations with everyone and kind of, you know, all the people that we needed to have there, including the Parks District. I was really interested to hear their plans on improved river access in particular. Personally, I have often thought about that problem of trying to take care of the environment around the river and the ecosystem. And the fact that we just have so many people trying to access that river any day in the summer. And frankly, if you don't give people a way to access, you know, they will create their own. They will put a path through the endangered habitat. And, you know, I feel like that's what's been happening in our city is we're just seeing the few access points being overrun. On the walk back, Derek and I ran into some kids who were, wanted to know if we would like to join them jumping off the Columbia Bridge, at which point I put on my school teacher hat and explained at great length why we don't want them to jump off the ridge, bridge and what the actual danger is. And the danger is you don't know what's under the water. Is it a boulder? Is it a tree? And that's, you know, why we worry about you kids. Please don't jump off the bridge. But I thought about, you know, that. The other reason frankly, that the Parks District doesn't really talk about much is because those kids coming out of the river are then trampling through the endangered and, you know, so much is you kind of gotta give people a way to do what they want to do. Otherwise, they're going to find a way to do it that is more dangerous and more destructive. So yeah, finding out about the Parks District's plans, that was interesting and exciting for me to hear about that. And then the other thing was from CET, the, and I don't even know what we're calling it. Derek, it's that ride, the van pooling that is going on. More than forty vans, is that right?
Forty-seven currently.
Forty-seven vans. And this is a cooperation with Enterprise Car Rental. Enterprise provides the vehicles. And so all forty-seven of those are a very well organized carpool, you know, so we're all going to the same place. Enterprise Car Rental is giving us the vehicle. The gas and insurance are being paid through this cooperation between CET and Enterprise and literally door-to-door service. So it, I remember hearing the advertisements on TV when Enterprise first started this program and honestly had no idea that it's been going, you know, in my opinion, really well in our community. Forty-seven is a lot of, starting to get to be a lot of vans, a lot of people starting to know how much time they can save, what they could be doing on the way to work instead of driving. So this was great. The other thing that came out was myself realizing, oh, Barb Campbell, have I, you know, dropped the ball just keeping an eye on our budget numbers that is, are available for accessibility projects? And when I was first elected, this was back, I first ran in twenty twelve and I lost. But I won in twenty fourteen and one of the big issues right then, twenty twelve to twenty fourteen, was accessibility. Our city just did not have a good system for actually removing barriers. We would get barrier removal requests and they would just, the pile would build up. And so there was a political will, a couple of us got elected and we managed an increase in the accessibility budget by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. So where have I dropped the ball? Well, that was a decade ago and have I been paying attention to how we're spending them? I was concentrated so much on putting more money into the bucket. I kind of lost track of how the money's coming out of the bucket. So I just had a preliminary meeting with our financial officer. I've spoken to Cassandra just a little bit. I've spoken to Andres just a little bit. And it seems to me that the story these numbers tell go like this. We used to have an engineer who was specific for accessibility projects. His name's Rory. He now works in Corvallis and that individual was able, you know, frankly, to spend this money to think about where do we need these projects? And because he was an engineer, was actually able to get those maybe all the way through the design phase. Well, we, Rory, as I said, moved to Corvallis and from what I know, we did not replace that position specifically. And then in that time, we passed a GO bond. The, and right, and the question I was asking as we were passing the GO bond was to David Abis. And David, can you even spend all this money in a year? Because, you know, at a certain level, you just can't. It's too many detours. It's just not enough people to be able to plan and design. And there is actually an upper limit. That was how we structured our GO bond. So long story short, what it looks like to me is we have consistently had a surplus of money where year after year, we start the year with two million dollars in twenty nineteen. We spent one point three million dollars of that money, which meant that the next year we had eight hundred thousand left over. And, right? And, and so, you know, I'm thinking about, so what do we do about this problem? We have another decade of GO bond projects coming in. Our city is getting even busier, not, you know, there's just not a break for us to be able to specify, here are these accessibility projects. All of the GO bond projects have multiple levels of funding. That's all really complicated. So Stephanie has let me know, as has Cassandra, that the budgeted money available this year has been programmed and we're going to hear from David Abis about that. So, you know, long story short for this meeting is wow, am I interested in hearing that report? And find out, you know, why does David think he's going to be able to spend all the money this year? And in what way would he spend it? And then just for myself, you all, you know, thinking about that problem of, of not having a specific person makes me think, you know, maybe what we should be thinking about is, is supporting other programs. So we have, for example, safe routes to school. I think it is a fairly safe bet that any infrastructure improvements that make it safer for kids to get around are also making it safer for seniors. They're also making it safer for people who roll and, you know, and that is a program. Oh yes, there are plans, there are ideas. Staff is kind of always waiting for that extra grant money to come in to be able to do that. Another, our neighborhood greenways. We have a program for neighborhood greenways. That is a program where, you know, we might be able to leverage, right? So that is what I have been thinking about recently. I will be interested in hearing more about our plans to build these capital. And the money I'm talking about is specifically for capital. And then I will also be wondering what was the accessibility component for the Drake Pump Station and the Aubrey distribution improvements? Seem like the only expenditures so far this year are part of, you know, projects that are coming from other departments. So I myself am still, you know, very curious, very excited to find out how it is that we're going to spend our whole one point seven four two million, is that right? For twenty twenty-four? A lot of money, you guys. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
I do have an update. Oh, sorry. I have an update for the STIP program. And there are STIP payment options that have been added. There's the Visa debit card, a check payment or a direct deposit. The expected timelines for those, the Visa debit card is unchanged. The check, check option is two to three weeks and for the direct deposit, it's two weeks. Payment preferences can be changed at any time and I believe you've been sent information on that. If not, we can resend it out and just let us know if you are putting a check and wanting to from your credit or from your checking account, go ahead and bring it to the next meeting in a sealed envelope and we can give it to the person and we can process this for you guys.
Okay. Those times you gave, those would be the, the leg time before those are issued after, after each meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for that. Right. Any other? Well, I guess I'm supposed to say our next COBAC meeting will be on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, from one to two thirty PM. And is there any other COBAC business at this point?
Oh yeah, I'd like to mention something that's tangentially related. This is John. It goes into Melissa's, you know, housing and barriers to access talk that she gave to us. I just found out that forty units at Compass Corner were just denied to be built. And when every unit matters in this town, it's important that we try and build so that people can afford to live here. So it's really terrible news. Hopefully they can win an appeal, but we have a lot of barriers to making this place an affordable town for everyone here and we just got to do our part. So I'll land on that sad note.
Was that Louva?
Uh, no, that was the planner that they hired. I have the report right here. You can look at it after the meeting if you want.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, with no further business, City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting for May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four is adjourned.